And so, Jason.
Morning, everyone. Before I call the meeting in order, I am going to take a point of personal privilege. I want to introduce Kinsley Landry from Houston, Texas. If she can stand, she's going to be embarrassed. But she is here for orientation. Her father and I were at LSU together, and that is proof that if you, if we do the right thing, then they will keep coming back. So she's here from Houston, Texas. Although her dad, when I met him, was from Abbeville, Louisiana, she's from Houston, Texas, so we're glad we have snatched your daughter back over here.
Here, here.
Ms. Griffith, would you, the meeting will now come to order. Ms. Griffith, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Warner?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Armenter?
Here.
Mr. Blossman?
Here.
Mr. Brazel?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Shatteland?
Here.
Mr. Dampf?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Mr. Yarborough. Mr. Chairman, have a quorum.
Thank you. Dr. Haney, will you please facilitate the invocation and the pledge, and then introduce our presenter?
Yes, it's, it's my honor today to introduce Jack Green, who will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Jack is a rising Ogden Honors College senior, double majoring in Coastal Environmental Science and Political Science. He is from Lake Charles and is a two-time recipient of the Udall Scholarship, which is a nationally highly competitive scholarship given to students who focus their work on a variety of issues. For Jack, it's the environment, something he's passionate about, and we are very proud to have Jack here today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jack. And our prayer today will be led by Sarah Prokopio. Sarah is a rising Ogden Honors College junior from Baton Rouge and is majoring in Mass Communication with a concentration in political communication. She was chosen to participate this year in the Lamar Governor's Fellowship Program in Louisiana Government for the Department of Health and Hospitals, and is also a phenomenal student.
Lord, we're meeting today to conduct matters of business, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities, so that our activities may come to a successful conclusion. And thank you for being our source of guidance today as we lead LSU and the state to a bright future. In his name, amen.
Amen. And now, Jack's going to say just a few words.
Thank you all so much for allowing me and Sarah to come to this meeting to represent the Honors College. As Provost Haney mentioned, I've been in the Honors College for three years now, going into my fourth year, and it's really just been the pinnacle of my education here at LSU. Coming from kind of a smaller school, it was a really great experience to come into such a large university, but have such a tight-knit, such professional staff and faculty to be able to guide me through my education. Both me and Sarah are in the La Salle program, and as students, we're both really passionate about the issues of Louisiana, and we really want to stay in Louisiana. That program focuses our entire education on the issues of the future of Louisiana, namely coastal land loss and poverty. And so, the opportunity to maintain a close-knit cohort who cares about the same issues and would love to all stay in Louisiana and face those problems, and be able to focus all of my classes and my research, and then potentially, next year, my thesis, on the issues of Louisiana with like-minded students who are also success-driven for the community and for the state, is a really great opportunity. And I thank you all for letting me come here to talk about it.
And I'll keep it quick, but at LSU, there's just a special feeling you get at certain moments, and it's going to a football game, it's walking through the quad in spring, and you can wear jeans without feeling gross. And it's all the time at the Roger Hadfield Ogden Honors College. And the, the success that I've had at LSU is credited in large part to their, their efforts and their faculty and their wonderful staff and the leadership. Dean Earl is wonderful, and he just supports us in everything that we do. You know, like Jack said, I'm a Louisiana Service and Leadership Scholar, I'm a Louisiana Legislative Women's Caucus Scholar, I'm a Governor's Fellow, and all of that wouldn't have been as easy or as doable without the guidance and their support, and truly the love and the support that they receive, not only from LSU, but from the community of Baton Rouge and the community of Louisiana. So I'm just very lucky to be a part of that and a part of LSU. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no individuals registered for a public comment, so we do not have to recognize that part of the agenda. Last month, the Board voted to bestow the title of Board Professor on Willis Deloney, a musician who has an international reputation in classical and jazz piano. I would like to take this opportunity to welcome the professor and invite him to make a few comments.
And if I just may, we are so thrilled to present our new Boyd Professor, Willis Deloney. As you know, and as our Chair just mentioned, he's renowned for being an exceptional pianist who definitely crosses over between classical and jazz music, and incredibly rare talent, and indeed is credited for the international reputation LSU has garnered in jazz music. Dr. Deloney has been on the faculty in the School of Music at LSU for 21 years. You will recall, he's a highly acclaimed pianist, and has appeared as soloists and served as a music arranger for more than 30 American orchestras, as well as orchestras in Canada, Russia, and China, and has performed both classical and jazz recitals throughout the world, including France, Germany, Mexico, Brazil, Costa Rica, culminating in a debut at Wild Recital Hall of Carnegie Hall in New York City. He has nine commercial recordings that document his artistry and versatility. And for a full-time faculty member to have 10 performances in a year is remarkable, but for a faculty member to average 10 performances a year over an 18-year period is truly mind-boggling. And he joins us today to formally accept his certificate designating him as the 76th Boyd Professor in LSU's history. And he is here today with his wife, Tricia. And we recorded a short performance to share with you Willis's gift, because it certainly speaks to it much better than I ever could. And that he is also an incredible mentor, teacher, colleague, and friend is just lanyap, as we say here in Louisiana. So I'm thrilled for you to be able to, to hear Willis present, and then he'll have a few short words to say with that to us.
Good morning. I prepared this. I'm a jazz musician, so I'm used to improvising, but I, I figured I'd better prepare today a little more closely and a little more carefully than normally for my public remarks. I like to talk, but this is different. To the members of the Board, Provost Haney, my wonderful Dean Todd Queen, the Director of the School of Music, Jim Bio, Vice Chancellor Jane Cassidy, President Alexander, and so many others, I offer this rather inadequate expression of gratitude to all who had some part in what is the greatest honor of my life. My wife said, "Don't crack up." Well, things like this don't happen to an individual unless that lucky person has great colleagues. Friends and fellow musicians around the country and scattered around the globe figure into today's celebration. And here at home, you should know that my LSU colleagues in the School of Music are superstars. They are some of the best musicians, scholars, and teachers in the world. And we music faculty here at LSU are privileged to work with world-class students, major talents, who are the important artists of the future, the important leaders of the future, much like these two incredible young people seated to my right. And to my students, present and past, if you could listen today, and by the way, my students have been from many states in the United States, Ukraine, Kazakhstan, Colombia, South America, Costa Rica, Brazil, Argentina, Honduras, Canada, China, Egypt, Korea, Japan, Australia, Taiwan, Russia, Moldova, every continent on the globe except Antarctica. I've taught students from these places because they like the idea of coming to this wonderful university. These people give us hope for the future of music and civilization in general. I salute them, and I'm so proud of you. This incredible community allows people like me to explore musical possibilities, to search for beauty and meaning in those sweet notes that float around in our heads 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Yes, I hear them right now. It's just the way we crazy musicians tend to be wired. But today, I feel like I'm the luckiest college professor ever, working at this great university that has encouraged my work and growth in disparate musical fields. It doesn't happen at most universities, and LSU has distinguished itself, in my mind, for allowing me to do what I want to do. How lucky can a person be? Some of you know that I'm a son of Louisiana. I was born in Lincoln Parish, spent my formative years in Caldwell Parish, McKithen country. We lived in the house where Governor McKithen was born. I played baseball in the past years with his first cousin, John Wesley McKithen. That's another story, but it was fun. Teenage years at Zachary, I've lived a charmed life, never more so than right now. I need to recognize my parents, who actually are watching online today. My mother was that very important person who got me to those piano lessons in those crucial early years. She made me practice. I didn't always want to. I preferred baseball most days. Also, another story. I'm not very good at baseball anymore. But she was the constant. And my father would tell you that his major contribution to my musical development was staying out of the way. Actually, he didn't stay out of the way all the time. He was always there and supporting me all the way. Also watching online is my mother-in-law, who is an LSU School of Music alum from the 1940s. I had incredible collegiate-level teachers myself, many of whom are gone now, and I so wish I could share this day with them. But they were the great mentors. We look at our teachers very fondly, we musicians, because we work with them so closely. I wish they were here today. I need to give a shout-out to our three grown children, fiercely talented people, Craig, Mary Claire, and Ben, all of whom work in the arts. I suppose it's the family trade. And we have the four most beautiful grandchildren on the planet, so I should make sure to add that. It's not open for debate. But most especially, I share this amazing thing with my wife, my sweetheart of 41 years. Tricia, she's quite simply an amazing woman. I had the good sense to marry up, a strategy that I advise for all men. She's also a wonderful musician among her other many talents, and I think she's the best teacher I've ever seen. Stephanie is one of her former students. I think she's taught everybody in this town, or Sarah, yeah. It's amazing what she can do. And I'm honored and humbled today, beyond measure. When you get down to it, I'm just a piano player who's very happy that people might want to listen from time to time. And I've been very, very lucky along the way with colleagues, students, and friends who have bought into what it, what I, what it is I do for a living. So there are no words to express my gratitude adequately, so I'll just stop and simply say thank you from the bottom of my heart.
And on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I would like to present this certificate. It says, Louisiana State University, in recognition of distinguished scholarship and outstanding contributions to education, Willis Deloney, Ph.D., is hereby designated a Board Professor with all privileges and honors pertaining to this status, May 31st, 2019. Congratulations from all of us.
And thank you for loving James Booker and Oscar Peterson, as well as Beethoven and Chopin.
At this time, we will recess the board meeting and move to committee meetings. Is there any objection to this? Hearing no objection, our board meeting is in recess. Mr. Anderson, can you please convene the Academic Affairs Committee meeting?
Yes, sir, I will. And Ms. Griffith, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Brazel?
Here.
Mr. Armenter?
Here.
Mr. Shatteland? Ms. Jones? Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Yarborough? Mr. Chairman, have a quorum.
Thank you. Dr. Haney, would you present the consent agenda items for our consideration?
Yes, absolutely. So for today's consent agenda, we have five items on the agenda that include an intent for a new program that is focused on development of individuals who can provide online training, web-based, and e-learning programs. We also have 12 namings for athletic facilities that are in honor of advocates and supporters of athletics, and also a naming for the Landscape Architecture Recruiting Center, a classroom, and approval to confer degrees for online graduates, and I ask your favorable consideration.
Any questions of Dr. Haney? If not, a motion to approve would be in order. Got a motion?
Second.
And a second to do that. All in favor, say aye. Goes no, motion carries. Do we have some other items?
We do. So we have asked today for the benefit of the Board to have our Vice Provost for Online and Digital Affairs, Sasha Thackerberry. Sasha, you may recall, came to us a little over a year ago. She was an Assistant VP for Academic Technology at a very small liberal arts college that has about 6,000 traditional students and about 80,000 online. You may have heard of Southern New Hampshire University. So she is an exceptional talent that we are thrilled to have her here. I cannot keep up with her. She would exhaust the Energizer Bunny. And what has been accomplished over the last year, not just for our campus, and to be very clear, this is a campus-wide, all campuses are involved endeavor. And I am thrilled today to have her here to give you just a very brief overview of what's been happening. So I will turn it over to Sasha.
Thank you. And I have been told I have five to seven minutes, so if you see me glancing at my cellphone here, it is not because I am texting during the presentation. So this is just really brief update. I've been here for 17 months, and for the first couple of those months, we did a very thorough current-state analysis to figure out where we needed to move forward. And so we have some goals, but from a strategic perspective, I want to say this is really only possible because of the vision and leadership of President Alexander and also Provost Haney. This is a very big culture shift. This is a challenging thing to move an institution forward about 20 years, pretty fast, and it is only because of complete commitment for our post-traditional and non-traditional students, which is really the growing part of higher education right now. which is really the growing part of higher education right now. So our strategy here is we're looking at not building for today. It's too late to build for today. Today is owned by the Southern New Hampshire Universities of the world, the Western Governors of the world, and unfortunately, the Capellas and University of Phoenixes of the world. This is being broadcast, though, right? I have colleagues at those institutions who are fantastic, so I just want to put a little asterisk on that. So our strategy is really to build to three, five, and 10 years from now, the whole infrastructure from the ground up for what we're going to need for growth to support post-traditional learners primarily, also traditionally-aged learners who cannot come to Baton Rouge physically, also to Alexandria, U NIS, and Shreveport. And a core part of this is really enabling students to take smaller chunks of learning, so a whole stackable strategy whereby a student can come for a certificate, be it now at the undergraduate level or at the graduate level, get some specific workforce-related skills, and stack those to an academic credential over time. So this whole strategy really is stackable from the very micro to the macro to make sure that there is no learning or no credit wasted, and it's really all about social and economic mobility, so that learners who love LSU from out of state can still get that LSU degree and contribute to our state's sustainability, but also so that students who are working, who have families, can still come to LSU here. So we really have three primary goals, and the first one is high-quality learning experiences. That is first and foremost what we do. We focus on, right now, program development, course design and development, and looking at our technology environment. So our other two goals are world-class customer service and fiscal sustainability, and you do have a board report that looks like this, that provides a little additional detail to this. Everything we do comes back to those three goals. And it is not a mistake that the first of three goals is high-quality learning experiences. It is very important that we protect the academic integrity of our certificates and degrees, and equally important that we protect our high-quality brand. So what we are not looking to do is become a diploma mill. What we are looking to do is ensure that every single graduate walks out of here with high-value skills and knowledge sets to be very successful in their careers. A big part of what we're doing, again, is program development. So currently, we have seven full degrees online and three certificates, and that puts us not very far up in the echelon of degrees offered by public institutions. So we're putting a renewed emphasis on putting as many degrees online as we can while maintaining the quality of them, and that comes to our second point here, which is course design and development. We have created an entire learning experience design from the bottom up, which is a little bit different than an instructional design team, so it also focuses on the user interface to make sure that we have a contemporary learning experience, that folks can experience their videos on their cellphones while they're on the bus on the way to work. It's all about really making sure those learning experiences are both high-quality but also accessible. So we've made changes to the learning environment. We do have Moodle as our LMS, and we have also curated support services across the institution. What we're not trying to do is reinvent the wheel. LSU already has some amazing academic support services that we just need to get to our students, so we've curated many of those pieces. And this is what the new learning environment looks like. So I have some before-and-after pics in the board report that you can look at, and those are in color, although there's a lot of purple and gold in there. It's kind of what we do, right? And then, too, world-class customer service. So this is really crucial. This is something that very few public institutions do well, and when they do it, they typically outsource it to an OPM. We'll get to insourcing that in just a minute. So we previously had a partner, and that partner represents many institutions, and about 50% of our tuition revenue was actually going out of state. So we felt very passionately that we could provide those services better internally, so we insourced those, all of those services. So marketing, recruitment, and retention are things that are done by jobs, that are 30 new jobs here in Baton Rouge, right over in Pleasant Hall. And so we're not only talking the talk of economic development, but we are living it every day, and that's something that I know the team here is really, really proud of. In terms of recruitment, there's a lot of pieces that go into that. We want to make sure our post-traditional learners don't get lost, right? So they might not know the difference between the Bursar's Office and financial aid. We need to make sure we're not putting up barriers. And finally, retention. For online, that's crucial, but it's crucial across the university. I know this is one of the top strategic priorities. When we admit a student, we want to commit to that student and make sure they become one of our alumni. I'm moving really fast here because I have a lot of information, so I will have a couple minutes, but feel free to contact me at any time. I'm the only Thackeberry at LSU, so you can find me pretty easily. So these are just a few visuals that represent. We have an entirely new website, so we have a web development team now, completely new website. We have video tutorial, sorry, video testimonials from our graduates. I think we have like 43 of them now. It's amazing. It's amazing. We also have, right up there is one of our learner concierges and the support services that they provide. So every online student actually has a name of a person that they contacted the institution who helps them put all the pieces together. So they're not calling an anonymous number. They're calling Sally, or they're calling John. You know, we actually don't have a Sally or a John, but that's kind of the point. And then, oop, I'm jumping all over the place here. Okay, so our third primary goal is to make sure we have a fiscally sustainable model, and that means affordable degrees, but it also means that we want to create this in a way that enables us to have reinvestment dollars in the institution. And when I say that, I'm not just talking about the online division, reinvestment dollars in the institution at large, right? So the institution that I came from was very successful in ensuring that the buildings on campus were paid for by these investments, and this is something that we can help support our faculty on, our staff on, and make sure that we are preserving the mission of research at the institution still by being able to reinvest. So we're really doing financial and enrollment modeling, making sure that we are doing market analysis to pick, to develop first, the programs that are going to most aptly scale. And then again, it looks like by insourcing our OPM over the next 12 months, we're going to bring between $4 and $5 million back to the state. And that's all going right back into the infrastructure, which is very, of course, expensive to build, people, process, and technology, so that we can scale. And that $30,000 number, that is actually a very doable number. Absolutely doable. So just by the numbers, over the past year, we've had 19% growth in students year-over-year. Those students are taking more courses. We like to think that's because of our learner concierge team and the kind of high-touch concierge service we have, so 24% increase in courses. Again, the 30-plus new jobs, we have 1,400 graduates. We're actually going to have 1,500 after our next commencement ceremony. And again, the reinvestment. If you look at that map, you'll see, you know, obviously Louisiana has our most graduates, but we actually have a very strong national presence, California, Texas, Florida, and strangely, like, New Jersey, something odd. So we have an incredibly strong brand, and all that we need now are additional programs to grow. So our goals moving forward are those new programs. We also want to be able to support our partners at LSU Alexandria, U NIS, and Shreveport. So we are supporting U NIS's first fully online AA for transfer. We're very excited about that. That launches fall. We are also launching, actually, we've already gone to market with four degrees for LSU Alexandria, and we hope to support more of those in the future. We're also supporting LSU Shreveport and LSU Shreveport Health Center with their new Masters in Public Health, which also launches this fall. We are launching three master's programs in fall and our first undergraduate degrees, which required a lot of technical work. So if Dan were here, I would recognize his team at I T S as well because reprogramming a mainframe ain't the easiest thing in the world. So we're launching those undergraduate degrees, and we just, we haven't even put them on the website, and we just admitted our first student for the Bachelor's in Construction Management in October for our first undergraduate. We don't know how this student found the application. They must have Googled some very interesting keywords. And then employer partnerships, so we really didn't get into that, but that's a whole part of the stackable strategy, too, to make sure that we have non-credit-to-credit pathways and a whole portfolio of micro creds, which we trademarked, and also systems and automation. So when we talk about scale, it's really important to preserve quality and make sure students don't get lost, and so that automation is a really big part of that. Did I make it? I totally didn't even look at my time.
You were finished.
No. No, I didn't make it. My apologies.
Thank you very much. As you can see, there's been a tremendous amount of progress in this area, and like Sasha, there has been a commitment across our campus to this initiative, and absent that and her leadership, we would be in a very different place and persisting in, I think, what none of us were satisfied with. So as Sasha said, I very much appreciate President Alexander's leadership in this area and am thrilled to be bringing to you this time next year where we are. As you can imagine, right now, as Sasha noted, this is a lost leader for us. We are investing in this infrastructure so that we can begin to have those benefits when these programs begin to scale. I would also just note that there are very few universities that are building this within the university structure, and I want to just applaud Sasha because that's really where the culture shift many just decide to buy an institution or go build a separate one because it's very difficult to manage that internal cultural shift. And again, just incredible work across the entirety of the campus with our deans really providing great leadership, working and partnering with Sasha.
And our superstar faculty.
They're amazing.
I should have started with that. We have amazing faculty, so.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Ms. Thackeberry, I'm one of your students. I live way.
No pressure.
I live way, I live way too far away to come online. I live 500 yards over there. But I want to tell you how outstanding your program is. I am, and I won't, I probably, and I've bored a lot of my friends here, and I won't do it much longer, but your staff is off the chart. I am technologically not deficient.
We agree.
And they, a lot of areas where I might be, but from getting my transcripts together to walking me through the application, Ms. Kerschner, Ms. Simmons, and then my academic advisor, Ms. Brandy, outstanding. And then taking the class was not at all what I thought it was going to be. Dr. Hart, outstanding. I really, that program is off the chart, and I want to congratulate you.
Thank you so much. It's really just an amazing team that we're assembling, and it's just, it's a really special thing to be a part of because a lot of institutions have just decided to stand it up separately, but, you know.
Can I talk to you about my grade later?
Actually, I don't have any academic governance, so feel free to talk to Roland, I think.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? Thank you so much for that. It's exciting. A couple of questions. What's your biggest, what's our biggest hurdle that you're trying to overcome as you build out? And then, secondly, you know, what does success look for, if you look like for us? If you look five years down the road, what do you, what do you think our program is capable of looking like?
So.
Not to put you on the spot at all.
Right. So to answer the biggest challenge piece right now is the number of programs. So we, and like over the past year, we've created 57 unique master courses, and that comes from like, that doesn't seem like a lot of, it is a ton of courses for fully online degrees. We're building the entire gen ed because undergraduate hasn't been built here. One of our concerns is to be able to be responsive to the changing needs of, you know, the new normal and the new economy and, you know, workforce 4.0 and all those things. It's really important that we have new and innovative degrees, and the length of the governance process is very challenging for that. So one of the things I know Provost Haney is attempting to do is really streamline that because if we take 18 months to two years to stand up a new degree, we lose our competitive edge. And every, every month that we're not standing up new programs, other people are eating into our market share. And these are students who would rather come to LSU. We have an incredibly strong national brand, and that actually goes to your second point, which the trends that we've seen, there is, obviously, there's a huge growth in still in online degrees while overall enrollments in higher ed decline, and part of that is because the need for, you know, continual training, the need for continual degree progression, completion of degrees, which I know is a challenge that we have in the state. But there's really a handful of large players in that national space. So it's Arizona State University, it's Southern New Hampshire University, Western Governors, U M U C that just changed their name, right, to make it more understandable to folks. And so we need, once we have the programs, we're going to be able to go significant, we're going to be one of those national brands. Only, we're going to be one of the national brands that when people call up, it is an LSU degree. It's not like a Purdue University that's Purdue Global, which is actually a separate diploma. It's going to be the same degree, same high quality, and our graduates are going to go out and do amazing things.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Dr. Haney, Sasha, great report. This is really an interesting area to talk about and a great success the job has been doing.
Thank you, and thank you so much for your comments.
You mentioned some growth, 19% growth. Is that for the A and M campus or is that across?
That's just the A and M campus. Yep. And keep in mind, again, that's, that's seven programs. Once we have, I mean, even if you just did the math, if we had like 50 programs, we'd be, we'd be huge, but it has to be like the 50 right programs, right? So we're working on some new degree proposals that we call Da Vinci degrees that are a fusion of technical and business, and Dick's College is going to be very critical in that, but really looking at ensuring that we have a strong humanities, social sciences, even performing arts and arts skill set combined with, there are no going to be, there are not going to be any future jobs that don't have tech. It's just the reality.
In Valencia, I think the, I was fortunate, when we went to the Fiesta Bowl, I toured, Michael Crowe's the president of Arizona State, and I saw their operation. And we're doing something very similar to they, what they've done. They have 50,000 students in Tempe and 50,000 around the country and around the world. It'd be a great goal of ours to have 35,000 right here on campus and 35,000 throughout the nation and around the world as well. And that's exactly what we're looking to challenge, that arena and duplicate.
And that's absolutely doable. That's absolutely doable.
Well, we look forward to that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other comments? All right, if there are none, we will, a motion to adjourn would be in order. Motion, second. All those in favor, say aye. Those no, motion carries. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the work of the Academic Affairs Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Shadland, would you please convene the finance. Yes, sir, thank you. Nicole, would you please call the road?
Yes, sir. Mr. Shadland?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Brazel?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Ms. Werner?
Here.
Mr. Yarborough? Mr. Chairman?
Okay, thank you. We have two action items, and we have one, one update, which is our update on our supplier diversity program and looking for Dan. Oh, there you are, Dan.
Good morning, Mr. Shadland, members of the board. We have today, as Mr. Shadland noted, an update on the supplier diversity program, and our manager of the program, Don Lawhorn, is here to provide that update and answer any questions that you may have.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And today, I'm going to go over the future of the supplier diversity program and what we've been doing campus-wide and system-wide for the past few months. Basically, the approaches to supplier diversity vary. You have passive, which is doing pretty much nothing and waiting for things to happen. You have reactive, where when someone calls in with a complaint, you react to their complaint. Low engagement, which is what we were previously doing before I came onboard, where you just pretty much go in the community, tell people you have something, and wait to see what happens. And what we're doing now is strategic engagement, where we intentionally partner with, within different, different groups like SRMSDC, DOTD, LED, all the certifying agencies that actually make diverse suppliers certified. And also, we take different programs and assess programs that will give value-add to the diverse community. And then we do the research to make sure that we find. And then we do the research to make sure that we find all the opportunities for our First thing we did was a vendor and opportunity assessment. So what we did was we went through all our vendor data. With the use of supplier IO and actually hands-on research, we've scrubbed a bunch of the data to narrow down who's an actual diverse supplier and who's not. And then we're regoing through the process of certifying people who were on the list, who weren't certified, and getting people off the list who are not qualified to be certified. And that's part of the reclassification process. We also went through different campuses to pinpoint opportunities. And the opportunities we came up with are construction. We have a unique situation where we have major construction going on throughout the state. Health Science Center is about to build a building. New Orleans is about to build a building. And we have a building coming up on this campus, as well as a charity hospital renovations. Lastly, outreach. We didn't focus on outreach for the last 90 days because we're pretty much trying to go internal and communicate internally to make sure that the system knew that we have a diverse supplier program, how it operates, who's doing it, and what the rules are. The future is, we plan on hosting Doing Business with LSU sessions. We're going to go to Shreveport, link Health Science Center, Shreveport, and LSU, Shreveport together, and do a joint venture to show how to do business with LSU, bring in new vendors to get the list updated. And we're going to utilize local partners. Like I said, DOT, your fair share program in Shreveport, Metromorphosis, which is the city of Baton Rouge. NOLA BA, we announced yesterday that we did a collaborative with NOLA BA to form a procurement council. And then we're going to certify more local vendors to make access a lot more available because what I've heard system-wide is access. We want local people who can respond immediately because there are emergencies and our situations where we need local vendors, and we have to fill our database up with as many as possible. To that, communication is the key. System-wide face-to-face meetings is crucial. I've been running around the state trying to meet with everybody I can possibly meet with. Establish a newsletter. All entities in LSU have newsletters, so we're going to participate and add data to all the newsletters to try to make sure that we stay in the forefront of communication. Create new supplier diversity material to make sure that people know what the program is, how to get into it, how to engage, how to do opportunities with LSU. And attend all business managers' meetings. I spoke at LSU NAM's business managers' meeting. I'm going to speak at Health Science, New Orleans Business Manager Meeting, Shreveport, and continue that process on and on until we talk to everyone possible. And then create monthly publications and distribute them internally and then externally. Now, through conversations with Dan Lezal and Tyler Kearney, we decided that a two-man team couldn't reach everyone. So we came up with the concept to create diversity advocates at each campus. And these are key stakeholders at every campus who can actually influence their internal system, and we communicate directly through them, and they work directly with the people who report back to us with the data. So that we weren't just getting sterile data, we're getting actual active communications going on. At Health Science Center, Shreveport, it'll be Jeff Reynolds. Health Science Center, New Orleans, it'll be Ed Murray and John Herman. And LSU, Shreveport, Bill Wolf. And in this area, it'll be me. The goal over the next 180 days is to be deliberate in all our actions. Basically, we're going to finalize the diverse, the diversity on permanent memorandum. We're going to assess participation to make sure that we have people actively participating if we don't engage more people. We're going to do a capabilities log so that way, when we get people coming in, we have what their capabilities are. We worked in conjunction with the construction department to develop a list of qualified vendors. The construction department in turn contacted all the vendors and got their capabilities. So now we have a standard that we can use system-wide and distribute to all the LSU campuses. We're going to engage local contractors as mentors. Your larger firms can actually engage with smaller firms to do joint ventures, partnerships, and mentor protege programs. Assess current LSU events and develop new events to get more participation. And engage community partners such as your Chambers, your Urban Leagues, NOLA Business Alliance, Truth Fund, Lift Corp, all these companies that do micro lending and small business lending. And I'm proud to say that we're going to exponentially increase the level of diverse spend. And as of last night, we've done that. So we have someone from Tulane Partners here who's going to announce that they signed their first diverse client, and that's going to equal about $7 million or more. And they have a list of diverse participation clients, Gulf South, Star Smart, Nano, HGI, the Beta Group. So it's a long list of people that they have engaged so far. Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Lawhorn. Excellent. My question is about the six-month goal. The first item was a LSU permanent memorandum that would be effective LSU system-wide. Would that include our foundations and affiliates or would they not include in our system-wide governance of, under an LSU permanent memorandum?
That's currently in audit, and Dan Lezal can address that one better.
They, Mr. Starnes, the foundations are not, they're certainly not under our procurement code. They're separate private organizations. I could tell you that we've had a number, beginning last year, even a number of conversations with him about adopting our standards with regard to supplier diversity, and they are certainly amenable to doing that. In fact, TAF has been, with regard to their construction projects, has been very active in terms of, you know, moving toward, you know, being consistent with our supplier diversity goals.
But our diversity supplier policy that we want to include in the permanent memorandum system-wide, it does not include our foundations.
That would not. It would, but again, as, that just wouldn't, permanent memorandum would just relate to the LSU system campuses.
That was my question.
Okay.
A question. Do you include women-owned businesses in your goals?
Yes. Women-owned, minority-owned, small business enterprises, Hudson-owned, which is Louisiana-based businesses, veteran-owned, pretty much the gambit.
Other questions?
I don't have a question but a comment. Thank you for that presentation. It looks like there's progress being made in the supplier diversity program, so that's appreciated. Having someone at the different campuses who's going to push things forward, I think, is a, is a great step. So thank you all so much for moving this thing forward.
Thank you.
I want to echo what Supervisor Jones said. I think the presentation clearly shows demonstrable progress in an area that we have been needing to make progress, so I congratulate Dan, Don, Tyler, everybody who's worked on this. The president, a while back, committed to getting this thing into high gear and getting some wins that we could identify and be proud of quickly, and you all are certainly moving toward that. So King, thank you for your emphasis as well. I think it's a great idea with, I agree with Valencia, having the contacts and the advocates on each campus, putting real thought into this program. And thank you for your hard work.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you so much, Don. Okay, the next, we kind of start the budget process at this point in this time of the year. And as we, as we look ahead to our September meeting, where I think we will officially approve, this is kind of the budget, this is kind of the start of that, as we approve the 2019 supplemental appropriations and the fiscal year 2020 appropriations. Dan is going to kind of give us a brief overview of, and information that we need to have in our minds as we start this process. And I'd like to make a few comments as we start building the budget. And of course, there are, there are a lot of numbers in the presentation, but I'd like to make a few points and a few key, highlight a few key issues, key issues that jump out at me. Certainly budgets have stabilized, and I think that's good, but I think all of us recognize that just balancing the books is not our primary goal and that we want to use the resources that we have available to continue to build a better LSU. Last night, we had dinner with the UL Board and had some nice discussions. And the comment was made that the future is coming. And of course, as we look at online and where so much of education is going, we know that the future will require us to continue making future investments in our university so that we can prepare our students for the future that they're going to face. As I look through this, a few key points that jump out to me is that, one, our average faculty salaries are 7.3% below our SEC peer. Our core expenditures per student, in other, in other words, of what we spend or invest in their college experience is 29% below peer. And our administrative costs or our overhead that we tack on is 61% below SEC average. And so I think all of those numbers tell us that, one, LSU is efficient. But I think we would all agree that our students want more than just an efficient university. Our students want a solid value in their educational experience, which is a balance of being affordable and also having a high-quality education that is provided by the best faculty and the best facilities that we can provide. I think we're all proud that LSU is affordable, and we want to keep, keep that value there, and we want to keep improving on the quality here. At the end of the day, I don't think there are any magic bullets for any of this. There's no money tree that we can pick from. It's going to take a little bit of everything. It's going to take continued state investment. It's going to take continued private sector fundraising, which thanks to King and our team, is off to a great start, and we know the emphasis that is happening there. It's going to take continued enrollment growth in our university. It's probably at times going to take some increase in cost of attendance. And so it's also going to take continued creative ideas and investment, such as we've just heard from, from Sasha, in the online area. And so I just wanted to kind of make those comments as Dan launches into kind of an overview and would ask us to all kind of keep those things in mind as we set priorities of where we want to go, not just balancing the budget, but where we want to invest in the future for LSU. So Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Shadland, members of the board. As Mr. Shadland noted, this is really the beginning of our operating budget development period for fiscal year 2020, which will begin on Monday. And we'll be bringing, coming back to you in September with a request to approve the operating budget for that year. Just before we get into some of the numbers, just wanted to highlight again what some of the ongoing, the perennial budget pressures are that all LSU campuses deal with as we are moving toward putting together a balanced budget for, for each fiscal year. Mandatory cost increases, these are the cost increases, you've heard us talk about them before. These are the have-to-pay costs regardless of where we are relative to our budget situation each year. Include such things as retirement, group health insurance, classified staff merit increases that are mandated, and other state charges. Those grow, this year are going to be $7 to $10 million system-wide. Faculty and staff salary competitiveness, Mr. Shadland touched on kind of our, our ongoing challenge with regard to maintaining a competitive salary base so that we can recruit and retain faculty and staff at the level at which, which we should. And I'll share some data with that later on. Institutional student aid investment, both the merit and the need-based, again, I'll share some data on that as well. Certainly, as we are seeking to maintain access and affordability, the TOPS program is key in that. But increasingly, we are also having to make some significant investments in institutionally-funded student aid to ensure that we are both accessible and affordable and able to attract the student population that, that we need, particularly as we are, as Jose Avilas and his team are out there trying to recruit ever-growing classes and having success in doing so. Deferred facilities maintenance, again, we've, we've talked about that before as well. The LSU system represents 61% of the state higher ed institution deferred maintenance backlog, we, which in our case is just under $1 billion system-wide. We, we were able to get some, some additional support in the state capital outlay budget this year, which will, which will be helpful. We have yet to see how that's going to be allocated. IT modernization, again, like any business, any corporation, we're constantly needing to upgrade and modernize our IT infrastructure to be competitive and nimble and be a, certainly be the modern institution that our faculty and students and staff expect. And then finally, each campus has its own strategic campus priorities that certainly they, you, you show your true priorities by where you put your, your budget investment. And that's, that's what we face each year. Just very quickly, the mandatory cost growth, and again, these are all factors, as I noted, that affect each, each LSU campus in different ways. But I'm going to use the flagship campus as an example. With regard to mandated costs, which again are retirement, group health insurance, state civil service, classified merit increases and so forth, things that we have to pay each year, these have grown $43 million since fiscal year 2009, about 55% or just a little over 4%, 4% on average annually. During that same period, our total operating budget revenues, and that includes everything, state funding, tuition fees and the like, have grown 16.5% since fiscal year 2009 or about 1.4% each year. What that shows you obviously is that we, we have to be very strategic in terms of how we reallocate those, within those very limited resources and allocate within those resources to, to meet the, the cost growth. Just as a, as a point of reference, of that, of, of the mandated cost growth, which was $43 million, $37 million of that was solely due to retirement. That grew, has grown, retirement costs alone have grown 95% since 2009, or about 6% annually. So again, that is truly, if you have to point to the, the largest cost driver for LSU and likewise for other colleges and universities across, across the state, it would be retirement costs, which are driven by the, the state's program to pay down its accrued, unfunded accrued liability associated with its retirement systems. Mr. Shadland touched on the, the average faculty salaries. This again shows kind of our trend over the past several years relative to our average. As you could see, we are, have, have been below the average for some period of time. We've begun to make some progress the last, the last few years with some consistent investments, modest investments in, in faculty and staff salaries. But again, we're still, still remain below average. By, again, as a point of reference for next year, for the fiscal year beginning on Monday, our SEC peers are planning on average a 2% salary program.
Dan, can I ask you, interrupt and ask a question?
Sure.
The agenda item that I have says we're going over the appropriations for the year. I'm wondering why you're spending so much time talking about our mandated increases and the salary increases. It doesn't really seem to fit within anything that's on the agenda today.
I will, and I'll be getting to that. I'm just trying to provide some context for the, for the operating budget development.
Okay.
Okay, and I will be getting to that.
All right.
Again, talking about institutionally-funded aid, again, being another cost driver.
Sorry, what's the, what's the context here? Can we, can you?
Sure. As we are, we're preparing to put our budget together, our operating budget that we'll be bringing back to you in, in September for your consideration. These are some of the major factors that we're going to have to, that we're going to have to contemplate.
Now, the, the budget that we're putting together that you'll be presenting in September does not include any, any fee increases or anything like that, right?
No.
So going over these factors, I'm not quite following the context for the budget discussion.
Because the mandated, well, let's, let's use the mandated cost increases. We're going to have, we will, we're going to have to fund those as part of our operating budget. Faculty salaries, again, that's just context for things that we have to, we have to, we have to deal with.
Are you going to be dealing with that in September?
We will, no, we will not be including. At this point, we're not contemplating.
That's why I was asking, why we're going over that kind of thing if it's not.
We will be including, there are some institutional aid expense increases that we will be including in the operating budget in September though.
Okay.
All right.
Dan, that blue line, I just want everybody to know, as we grow and as our campus becomes more diverse and we actually enroll more low-income students, the Pelican promise will naturally grow for us. That's a call to be in a public university, doing the right things for the students who need us the most. And many of these lines that you see, particularly that blue line, no other university in the state does what we do at LSU in that blue line. But that blue line is probably going to grow as we continue to expand and serve many of the students who need, need us the most.
Exactly. And that, that, that has continued to, to be a priority as well. Very- Very quickly, we'll get to, again, this chart shows the trends, certainly shows that we have become much more tuition and fee-dependent over time. Flagship, the same way. The FY '19 supplemental appropriation, which was House Bill 392 and provided some additional funding for the operating budget that we will be concluding in FY, including at the end of this month. Just very quickly, you could see we had received $4.5 million in state general fund support, an additional $19 million in expenditure authority for fees and self-generated, which was associated with, again, the fee increases that were adopted last year at several campuses as well as enrollment growth to ensure that we had the appropriate expenditure authority, and then statutory dedicated funds, which were related solely to what are referred to as the self-fund. There had been a reduction made last year in the beginning of the operating budget, and those funds were restored. They actually came in and those were restored. Just very quickly, in terms of the state general fund support, what that went to, a little over $900,000, went to Health Science Center in Shreveport for their clinical skills lab. Health Science Center in New Orleans received $2.2 million for lease costs associated with the Cancer Research Center. LSU A&amp;M, the flagship, received $370,000 for the Center for River Studies, and Pennington received $1 million for their budget support for their operating budget. For FY '20, again, this shows the state general fund appropriation only, but just to provide some perspective, the state did include an increase of about $9.2 million to help begin making some progress, colleges and universities toward meeting mandated costs. That's about 40% of what the anticipated mandated cost growth was going to be, and that was allocated on a prorata basis to each campus. That's included in the numbers for FY '20. Other state general fund increases included, Health Science Center, New Orleans received permanently the $2.2 million for lease costs. Ag Center received $3.75 million for operating budget support, and Pennington, their $1 million, was included for, was made permanent. There are, because there were some additional funds provided in FY '19, it does look like a couple of our campuses received a decrease, but that's solely due to the fact that the funds were our one-time and will be backed out in this year. There was a formula adjustment that was made by the Board of Regents to more align the formula, in their view, with their master plan. That resulted in a de-emphasis on research, which had a direct impact certainly on the flagship campus, which, again, less reduced our allocation that we would receive from the formula.
Dan, before you go off this, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do you or any of you, you probably don't have it in your papers with you, or any of your team, know what the LSU A&amp;M state appropriation was in 2008?
Let me go ahead and look. LSU A&amp;M, the state general fund appropriation, well, actually, that plus the self-fund was $265 million.
Okay, so in 2008.
Actually, no, that's 2009.
2009. Does that compare apples to apples with this chart?
The number that would compare apples and apples to that chart would be $254 million.
So LSU A&amp;M had $254 million of state general fund appropriation, and that's down now to 115.
Yes, sir.
You know, we have a structural problem. I'm doing this for, I did that for the point of just bringing back to the discussion what we all know. We have to have a substantially different funding model driven by the state and from the private side, and from users, students, et cetera. This is not sustainable. It's not sustainable to have a state general fund appropriation level that has been cut nearly in half over that critical decade. Look, we all know what happened, and we know what we fought. That's why I think it's so extraordinary, the accomplishments of this institution over this last decade in light of these funding decreases. But there's a point, look, in government, we always say, you know what, do more with less, do more with less. We hear that over and over again. There actually is a point at which you can't do that, and it starts to reverse. And one of those is going to be faculty pay, it's going to be recruitment, it's going to be support and recruitment of graduate students, it's going to be additional burden on future students and families. It's simply not sustainable, and I just, I hope that in this coming year, we're able to generate some political and some business community and some grassroots discussions among the broader LSU family that where we are structurally cannot sustain a flagship university. That's what I wanted to say.
And Dan, I'll point out that that places us where we are now at about a 1990-91 funding level, and we have about 8,000 more students than we did at that time. So we really encourage our legislature, with the support of the governor, to really, let's start reinvesting in what we used to do a decade ago much better.
You know, Dr. O'Yea, I don't remember the numbers, but exactly, but if I recall back in the early 90s or late 80s when I was on the staff in the Senate, Dr. O'Yea, I think that the funding levels for LSU Shreveport and LSU Health Sciences, I mean, not LSU Shreveport, the two medical centers, I think we were almost 90% state general fund-supported back in the late 80s, early 90s, before all the discussions with staff began on dispro dollars, and we began to see that shift to get to the point where it's ridiculous, the level of state general fund support to both Health Sciences Centers. And we see it in, you know, we keep moving past the elephant in the room, and at some point, we're going to have to address that. And I hope that, I hope that every individual, every business owner, every community member, every LSU parent makes this an issue in every elected official's race at the state senate level and the state representative level this fall, because this change can't be sustained by us. It's got to come from a different approach from the state of Louisiana and their investment in the institution. I mean, if I were, I'm thinking, Dr. O'Yea, in the back of my mind, and Dr. Golly, I can tell you, I can still remember documents that I'm thinking of from the early 90s on the medical schools, where it was like 92-93% state support. I mean, it was crazy compared to now.
About 12% now.
It's 12% now. Well, that says a lot about the strategic direction we're going in, doesn't it? And whether that matters to the state of Louisiana. So I think those are some of the things that, on the legislative level, we've had a governor that has stood up for this, for us. We've got a legislature that we have deep friendships in, but it's not getting there. And I'll tell you what we need to do. The challenge needs to go out by every business leader in the state to our partners at the LABIs, the New Orleans Business Councils, the Greater New Orleans Inc., and others, that we're in an existential crisis in post-secondary education, structural funding, and philosophical commitment to the state, and it's time we start addressing that.
Thank you.
Cam Dunn.
Thank you, Stephen. Dan, if you'll kind of move us on through.
Yeah, yeah, I'll skip these. We can go back and look at them at your leisure.
I think everybody does have copy of it.
Yes, yes, and there's a lot of supplemental information at the back that we won't be going through, but please let me know if you look through, if you have any questions. Again, over the next few months, we will be working with you, working with the campuses internally and across the system to put together the operating budgets, which we'll be bringing back to you in September for review and consideration, then goes to the Board of Regents for their review and approval, and then is forwarded to the Division of Administration for the governor's budget, and then we're back in the legislative session next year for fiscal year 2021. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, but would ask certainly your approval of the resolution before you.
Yeah, so again, we're asking for approval of the resolution that lets us begin, really begin the budget process and start spending the state appropriations. We'll come back with the full budget in September, but I would urge you to look through these reports. There's a lot of good data in there, and as we look at our priorities and we think about the issues that Stephen raises, again, we need to all be focused on the challenges in LSU's future. Questions? If not, can I entertain a motion for the approval of the supplemental?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you, and next.
Mr. Shadellane, can I just ask you, not politically-loaded question or statement, but one of the things that the board chair and Shadellane, you and I and others were talked about in committee was our support levels that we see in the upcoming budgets for graduate students. Remember, we talked about that. How do you see that standing in the future with the funding levels we're at now? Are we hamstrung there in the same ways? Is there?
Well, we actually, and certainly like Provost Haney spoke, is we have begun to make some very modest improvements in graduate student stipends, and at least last year, as you may remember, when there was a fee increase, we did have an exemption of the increase for GAs in that. But Provost Haney?
I would just, again, it's a challenge. As any resources coming in cover the costs, the increasing costs, as Dan noted in the information provided to you, you have to have net new revenue. In order to be able to do that, it's certainly a priority of mine to titrate down especially the fees for graduate students, but that will require investment of new resources to be able to do that. It is absolutely a priority. And certainly, as Dan noted, the additional fee was not applied to those graduate students who were receiving stipends last fall.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Dan, the last item is the request to approve the expenditure from the Carol Feist legacy funds, if you would cover that for us.
Sure thing. Very quickly, each year at this time, we bring, the Health Science Center in Shreveport brings forth a request to spend the Carol Feist legacy funds. Under the decree for use of the funds, any expenditure in excess of $1 million requires a Board of Supervisors review and approval. The budget that is being brought forth for expenditure for the coming year is 4.4 million, which will go toward certainly research, infrastructure and programming and cancer research. I'll turn it to Dr. Golly now to make a few comments about what those funds are going to be used for.
Thank you, Dr. LaZelle. Mr. Chairman, briefly, the Carol W. Feist legacy account was established from the bequest of the Carol W. Feist to support cancer research at our Feist-Wilder Cancer Center in Shreveport. As stipulated in the second addendum to the affiliation agreement between the LSU Board of Supervisors and the Health Science Center in Shreveport, a budget is required for the expenditure of legacy account funds, with the budget to be approved by the Chancellor of the Health Science Center and the President of Louisiana State University. The proposed 2020 budget continues to support our programs in basic and translational research, clinical research, and cancer control and prevention. Included are requests for intramural grant support, Feist-Wilder Cancer Center research infrastructure, including enhanced support for clinical research needs, seed packages for faculty recruitment and expansion of space and equipment for patient-related research efforts. In addition, we will support the core facilities needed to facilitate research. As Dr. LaZelle mentioned, the total 2020 budget request is a little over 4.3 million. A detailed explanation of the budget items are available in the formal Carol Feist legacy budget request. I thank you.
Any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the action item.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All right. Any opposed? All right, that concludes the Finance Committee. If there's any other matters, or any objections, we will adjourn. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, in this context, it's probably good to announce my intention to create an ad hoc committee pursuant to Section 6 of the Board of Supervisors bylaws, which allow us to, the chair may appoint an ad hoc committee for special assignments or for specified periods of the existence not to exceed the completion of the assigned task. As we heard today, a lot of discussion about our needs for revenue and our needs for resources, and the fact that Supervisor, as immediate past Chair, Perry said our state support really needs to, our state appropriation really needs to increase. At the same time, I think we all want to be careful, as good stewards of this university, not to always seek those resources on the backs of the families who pay the cost of attending LSU. Last year, we were put in a very difficult position of having to increase the cost of attending LSU on the working families that work so hard to send their kids here, and before we find ourselves in that kind of position, again, hearing everyone talk about the revenue needs, I think we owe it to the community, to the families, as we recruit students, so that they know that before we're just going to increase the cost of attending LSU, that your university is going to really try to find different ways to meet these needs. And so I'd like to create an ad hoc committee to evaluate alternative revenue options, a strategy for attacking the state appropriations problem, and any other ideas we can come forward with to meet our needs for resources by avoiding, hopefully, increasing the cost of attending LSU for families who work so hard to do that. And so committee members, I'm going to ask Supervisor Blossman to chair that committee, and the committee members will be Mr. Blossman, Mr. Starnes, Mr. Woods, Ms. Jones, Mr. Shadellane. I think that's it. So I said Mr. Blossman, Mr. Starnes, Ms. Jones, Mr. Woods, Mr. Shadellane. I'm missing one more person, but the committee, I'm asking that the committee immediately start their work with the help of our staff and come back with an initial report to the Board of Supervisors in 30 days about a plan to study this issue.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Aggressive.
We get extra. I like aggressive.
That's right. Earlier, if you can.
That's right. And again, the 30 days is not sort of the end, be-all, end-all report, but having enough experience in this university system, you need a deadline to keep things moving.
Yeah, we'll try to have something just to look through for next meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right, at this time, I would like to, Ms. Jones, would you please convene the Athletics Committee meeting?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Griffith, please call roll.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Arminter?
Here.
Mr. Blossman?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Damp?
Here.
Mr. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a question?
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Griffith. I know everyone joins me in their excitement for the 2019-2020 sports season, but before we look ahead, I want to take the opportunity to congratulate our student athletes for their incredible accomplishments on and off the field. 2018-2019 saw four SEC titles in men's track and field, gymnastics, men's basketball, and women's soccer. 16 teams reached postseason play, including a Fiesta Bowl win in football, a Sweet 16 berth for men's basketball, a second-in-the-nation finish for gymnastics and super regionals for both softball and baseball, and LSUE brought home a championship in baseball. Our student athletes did all of this while continuing to excel in the classroom and in the community. They make all of us at LSU proud. They make all of us at LSU proud, and we cannot wait to see what you will accomplish next season. Go Tigers! All right, Dan, would you please present the first three items?
Okay. Actually, I think I'll do the first two, and Mr. Woodard is doing the remaining, the coaches, coaches items. But I will, I will begin. The first item is the request to approve the full employment contract for Scott Woodward. As you remember, in April, the Board approved, reviewed and approved the binding term sheet. This is simply the long-form contract. The terms of the contract are highlighted, and the financial terms are highlighted in the summary of the matter indicating the compensation that will be, certain compensation that will be paid to Mr. Woodward over the next several years. And then in addition, as you note, there are a number of bonuses that will be considered based on longevity. These, the cost of the contract will be solely paid out of Athletic Department revenues, no, and no state general fund or tuition and fee dollars will be used for this, you know, for this salary, Athletic Department, excuse me, in supplemental income from affiliated organizations. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and ask for your approval of this matter.
Thanks, Dan. Are there any questions? Okay, if there are none, is there a motion to recommend the request as presented?
So moved.
Second, second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Is there, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any objection? Without objection, it is approved. Congratulations, Mr. Woodward, and welcome back. All right, we're going to have, are you presenting this one as well, Dan?
Yes, yes, ma'am. The second item is a request to approve an employment contract with Verge Osberry to serve two roles at the university, one Executive Deputy Athletic Director and second Executive Director of External Relations. As many of you know, Mr. Osberry does provide significant support to the university with regard to the legislative session and other, other related matters in addition to his athletic administration roles. The summary of the matter does highlight the, the terp, financial terms of the agreement, and as with Mr. Woodward, the contract, the payment of the salary amount, that certain compensation will be handled through Athletic Department revenues and potentially through foundation dollars if necessary, although it is not anticipated that that will, that will need to be the case. No state general fund or tuition dollars will be used. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and ask for your favorable consideration.
Are there, are there any questions or comments on this matter? Is there a motion to recommend the request?
So moved.
Second.
All right, is there, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any objection? Without objection, it is approved. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
All right, we'll have Scott Woodward present the rest of the items for consideration.
Madam Chair members, thank you, and again, I'm humbled at your confidence in me, and I look forward to leading this great august Athletic Department. Before you, we have seven items. Three of them are for our football coaches, extensions and amendments, and one of them's for our head strength coach, and the other two are for our tennis coach and our assistant basketball coach. And I'll, in the behest of time, I'll be happy to answer any of your questions or go over them individually, Madam Chair, however you'd like to do it, but they're all pretty straightforward as amendments and extensions.
All right, and are there any questions on any of the different items before us?
I move approval of those second items.
Right, thank you. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any objections? Hearing none, the motion is approved. All right, at this time, I'll also accept a motion to conclude the Athletics Committee.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any objection? The committee is adjourned. Mr. Chairman, this concludes the business of the Athletic Committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Also, for the minutes earlier, I couldn't think of the last member of the ad hoc committee on funding that we created, and it's Supervisor Arminter. It would be six members, according to my calculation. Mr. Woods, would you please convene the Property and Facilities Committee?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Griffith, will you please call a roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Woods?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Brazel?
Here.
Mr. Chatelain?
Here.
Mr. Damp?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Yarborough. Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call Mr. Tony Lombardo to present the items for consideration today.
First item is request from LSU Shreveport to authorize the President to determine an acceptable university purpose for donation to the LSU Shreveport Foundation of the Spring Street Museum property and movable assets. The LSU Shreveport Foundation is preparing through its subsidiary LSU Shreve Realty LLC to receive and to perpetually hold and own all of the assets associated with the Spring Street Museum, including the museum building located at 525 Spring Street in Shreveport. The museum is being donated by its current owner, the Colonial Doms of Louisiana. The LSU Shreveport Foundation will own the property and have the right to change its name and expand its scope should they deem it appropriate. The foundation will also become the beneficiary of the Helen Mann Memorial Fund Trust with a current value of 1.1 million dollars, as well as other funds associated with the museum. These monies are used to assist in the operation of the museum. The museum is consistent with the programs operated by the LSU Shreveport campus and is, is part of the future mission per the Chancellor, Dr. Clark. And we've done all of the due diligence on the property, both structurally, architectural and, as well as legally.
Are there any questions?
I'd like to make a comment. I think this is a great move for LSU-S and City of Shreveport-Bolger. This is one, this is an historic building that, if not the oldest, one of the oldest in Shreveport. It needs to be maintained and stabilized, and this would give LSU-S a presence downtown in the central business district of Shreveport. So I recommend that we approve this.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any further questions, comments?
Is there a motion to recommend the request as presented?
So moved.
So moved. Moved by Mr. Brown, second.
Yes, I'll second.
By Mr. Chatelain. Any opposition? Hearing none. So moved. Thank you very much. Mr. Lombardo, item number two.
I'd just say thank you.
If I may, jump to item four, update on Charity Hospital Redevelopment Project. I'd like to introduce Mr. Joseph St. Martin's with Tulane Partners.
Thank you, Mr. St. Martin. Please come forward.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board. My name is Joseph St. Martin. I'm a member of the 1532 Tulane Team, as well as I'd like to point out, I'm a 1999 graduate from the School of Architecture and former board member for the Professional Advisory Board for the school. I'm here today to kind of give you guys an update on the progress that we've been making on the redevelopment of the charity project. As you're aware, the pre-development agreement was executed in February, and that started our due diligence period, which is well underway. Since then, we have engaged a surveyor and completed the draft alter survey, and we're currently working through some title objection issues, which are very minor, but should be worked through very quickly. We also have our Phase One environmental report underway. We're currently ongoing through leasing negotiations with JLL and Phelps Dunbar on the actual leasing documents. Our historic tax credit consultant has spent over a month in the building doing photo documentation, and we're in the process of finalizing our historic tax credit application. We've met twice with the State Historic Preservation Office, and actually have walked them through the building on a four-hour tour to get more specific items that the Preservation Office is interested in maintaining. We've also completed a point cloud scan of the building, which is basically an exterior and interior scan of the building. We're proud to say that it's actually the largest scan that's ever been completed. The project was so important that Leica, the camera company, actually came down and bought new technology in order to produce this scan. The scan is so accurate that it actually, from the ground to the top of the building, is in within one-eighth of an inch accuracy, and through the width of the building is actually three-sixteenths of an inch in accuracy. So with this scan, it's allowing our design and construction team to integrate it into a BIM model or AutoCAD model that they can actually recreate the existing conditions of the building. So literally, you can drop a point at any point inside the building on the exterior and get a full 360-degree view of what that condition is when the scan was completed. Also, since the execution of the pre-development agreement, there have been three requests for qualifications that have been issued. The first was actually spearheaded by the Charity Hospital Redevelopment, CHR entity, which actually issued an RFQ for third-party code review consultants, and we're proud to say that that contract was awarded to Nano LLC, which is a WBE company and SE certified company as well. And because that process worked so well internally at 1532, we've decided to move forward with a similar procurement and RFQ process. And what we've done since then is we've actually issued two other RFQs for program and construction management and geotech and material testing services. And we're also proud to say that both of those contracts were awarded to WBE, I mean, MBE and SE companies. Schedule-wise, the design is underway. We've, the design and construction team have been meeting weekly since February to progress the design forward. Currently, we're planning for demolition and abatement to start somewhere between September and November, with the envelope and core construction to follow four months behind. So basically, we're going to start the demolition and abatement from the top down and then have the general contractor follow up about four months beyond, behind the demolition and abatement contractor with the actual general construction work. And right now, we're on schedule for all of the major construction activities to be completed by December of 2021. One of the main things that the Board pointed out in the RFQ process when selecting a developer for the redevelopment of charity was diversity and inclusion, and the 1532 Tulane Team heard that loud and clear. And what we've done since then is, as you were aware, the original team already consisted of the designers, architects, engineers, general contractor, and a community outreach coordinator. But what we've since done is supplemented the team with four additional DBE, MBE, or WBE firms. In addition to that, we currently have two local minority investors, which will have an equity position in the project, and they're currently working with our National Opportunity Zone Fund Managers to finalize their structure and investment. From the community outreach side, we're going to be holding a subcontract engagement forum on July 30th, and the purpose of that will be to have the construction team, the project management team, representatives from the AFL-CIO and the SBA office, to provide resources and gather information on interested subcontracting entities that are, that are interested in working on the project. We're also going to be meeting in the next few weeks with the Greater New Orleans Foundation in the spirit of charity to give them an update on where the project is as well. And lastly, we're anticipating on doing a project groundbreaking ceremony sometime between September and October to coordinate with the demolition and abatement activities. And lastly, what I'd like to do is thank the Board, the Facilities Chair, and specifically the staff that you guys have assigned to assist 1532 Tulane Partners on moving this project forward, specifically Patrick Martin, Danny Mahaffey, Jerry Jones, Don Longhorn with the Supply Diversity Office, because they've really been working hand-in-hand with us in procuring opportunities, and Mr. Kirk Deslett as far as allowing us access to the building and coordination of tours for interested tenants and investors. So if there are any questions?
Thank you, Mr. St. Martin. Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir, I have a question. Your, a large component of financing are the state tax credits that are available for this project, correct?
Yes.
It's my understanding that those tax credits expire next year. They've been extremely important in what's happened in redeveloping New Orleans, so I hope that there's effort, if I'm correct, I hope there's an effort to get the legislature to extend those tax, state tax credits.
Yeah, we're very aware of that, actually, they're, they're set to sunset in 2021, and we've been working closely with the legislature with the hopes of that being voted on so that they can be extended, but we're very aware of it, and we're adjusting our schedule for construction to reflect that.
Mr. Perry?
Could you just give us an executive summary version of what you're looking at on potential end usage and of the building?
Yes, we have a major anchor tenant that's looking at about 300,000 square feet. Currently, we have planned for 392 residential apartments, and the remaining 215 square feet will be dedicated to retail and office space as well.
What type of residential units would those be?
They're going to be affordable and workforce housing units.
Okay. Mr. Starnes, comment?
Sir?
Do you have a comment?
About this, where are we on the, have we started the process for negotiating the contract between us and 1532 Tulane Partners?
Yes, they're currently doing ongoing negotiations with JLL and Phelps Dunbar. We've had several iterations of the leasing document go back and forth, so we're making good progress on that.
Who's representing, who's, who's negotiating for LSU on that?
I believe it's JLL and Phelps Dunbar.
Dan, you want to speak to that?
Comment? No, I think, as Mr. St. Martin noted, those, those are the two principles.
Any other questions or comment for Mr. St. Martin? Let me say, Mr. Chair, that I want to tip my hat first to the LSU staff as well as the developer. They have lived up to their commitment to this board, to this university, to our community, not just from an investment standpoint, but also from a diversity standpoint, and I think this board spoke loud and clearly when we selected this team, and to date, the developer has been very aggressive in honoring their commitment. So I want to thank you, Mr. St. Martin, and your team for that, and also for our internal organization, Mr. LaZell and his team, for working so closely and efficiently with them. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lombardo, I think we have one more item we need to?
I believe so.
Okay.
Incidentally, that, that point cloud laser technology was used on campus Incidentally, that point cloud laser technology was used on campus to set construction timeline records when we built out the South End Zone Stadium expansion. It's a huge component to aid in design. So item two is being deferred to a future meeting date.
Yes, sir.
So we'll move to item number three, request from LSU A&amp;M to accept the donation of chillers to the LSU Lab School. A private contractor was awarded a grant by the Public Service Commission of $477,290 to construct a chiller plant in the LSU Lab School main mechanical, which gave us the opportunity to address quite a bit of deferred maintenance and improve the utility efficiency and our utility bill rates for that area. It was constructed by Brilliant efficiencies, and now that that is complete, they are requesting to donate this to the LSU campus. And pursuant to it being over $100,000, it comes to the Board for your approval to accept the donation.
Are there any questions on the motion?
So move.
Second.
Question, is there any downside to us accepting it?
No, we improve our utility efficiency. It's free equipment that's actually worth slightly more than the grant was awarded. There was foundation funds that also went into it to get it to about $540,000. But it's a great win for the Lab School.
Thank you.
It's been moved by Mr. Starnes, second by Mr. Brown. Are there any objections to the motion? It's so approved. Thank you, Mr. Lombardo.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think this concludes the business of the committee for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. At this time, we will break for lunch. We will stand in recess until one o'clock, at which time we will continue the committee meeting. Everyone, what time is the thing? Everyone, are we doing a picture now or after? Everyone, the transportation will be here at noon to bring us to lunch.